Hi, everybody. We're back. And, uh... I guess. So, um, I'm back again. Today's video, or tonight's video, or whatever time it is, is going to be, as promised, the review of the special town meeting warrant articles. I'm going to try not to spend a lot of time on them, even though they're important. It's just... It's a lot. There's just a few articles. The biggest one, the primary reason this meeting's being called, is because of the MBTA Communities Act. And we must, we must pass the articles related to the MBTA Communities Act by the end of the month. This must be done. So we gotta do this Thursday. And I'm gonna, as I go through them, there's other articles. And I'm gonna try to really zip through the other ones as well, and be very brief on the MBTA one, to just get to the points. And hope that people listen to me. Sometimes you do. And I'm hoping this is one of those times. Yeah. So let me get started. I gotta find it. Okay. Let me pull up the... All right, we have a special time meeting Thursday, the 25th. And I want to tell you, it is at the high school. I know it's musical chairs around here. They keep moving things around. Is it a plot? No, it's not. It's not a plot. The high school has, is our new favorite place. The acoustics are better, the equipment is better. Oh, please, can we keep it at the high school? And I hope that we can. I hope that, you know... One of the benefits of having the high school in Townsend is we're the only town that can use it, because you have to have your town meeting in Townsend. People can't have a town meeting at the high school because the high school's in Townsend. Same with Ashby. They gotta use their own resources, whatever. I don't know where they're going. People, honestly. I don't really, never paid attention. Doesn't matter, and I'm getting wordy. I want to move on, but I want to make sure everybody knows it's at the high school. And when I open it up, we'll see what time. I think it's 7:30, but wait till we pull it up. And I'm, I'm still dealing with my cold, so I have brain fog bad. And, um... Where the heck? There it is. All right, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna get myself out of the way. And we're just gonna, you're gonna hear my voice, but I'm gonna completely just show you the actual warrant articles, so you're not distracted by me. Okay? You got that? Can you see it okay? I hope you can. I think it's big enough. Maybe I'm gonna go over to the actual, uh... Where is it? Oh, come on, people. I gotta find the actual document again. Just 'cause it's on the screen doesn't mean I see the actual document. Oh, no. That's not it. That's it! I got it. Are we moving? We're moving it. Okay. All right, so, oh, 7 o'clock. All right, I take back my problem. I said seven, I said a different time. So it is at the high school. Really nice auditorium, if you didn't go there last time. It's, uh, Thursday, September 25th, at 7:00 PM. That's 1900 for those of us that are on the 24-hour clock. And I live on the 24-hour clock, so you're stuck with that. But please be there, it's right here, right there. 7:00 PM. At the North Middlesex Regional High School. Okay? So I will see, I hope to see everybody there. There's plenty of room for everybody that wants to come. If there isn't, we'll make room. We didn't fill it completely last time. Came close. So... But I need everybody. I want everybody to go down there so we can vote yes on only the articles that I say to vote yes on. I want to tell you how to vote, you betcha. This is my YouTube channel. And that's it. I'm gonna tell you how to live, right here. So Article 1 is not the MBTA. This is just, I'm gonna call this a housekeeping article, but it's important. Article 1, "To see if the town will vote to transfer the care, custody, and control of Zero Dudley Road, shown on assessor's map, whatever, from the Select Board presently possessed by it, by it for general municipal purposes, to the Town's Conservation Commission, or take any other action there, too." So if, um, those of you that have been going to town meetings forever, if we're gonna transfer property from just the control of it, you have to do a town meeting, you have to be on the town meeting, that's all. And this property is town property, it's been town property. We're not buying any new property. It's just this, it's on Dudley Road, doesn't have a street number, so it's zero. And it's the assessor's map thing. If you're really that interested, you can look this up. Or you can drive down Dudley Road. And, uh, I believe you go past, you know Peter J. Drive is? I think that's the street that's right there. And there's this little cubby hole that's got a sign there. I bet if you go by it, you probably assume that it's conservation property already. And that's part of the reason why, uh, can we just give it to them? Because the Board of Selectmen, their job is not to manage property. And, and so it, it's really kinda doesn't make any sense for them to really be involved with the day-to-day operation of land that's really used or considered by everybody, conservation land. It's not being used for, it's not gonna be used, there's no potential to use it for anything else. So they just need to do the paperwork and get the town to vote, and just, just say yes. All, all those in favor, aye. Done. Article 1 can be disposed of. It's real easy. If anybody speaks against it, please see me. I just don't get it. There's no reason to vote against this. It's just not a big deal. And the Conservation Commission likes to take care of property. They do. They like to, especially places where you can go hiking, and that's, this is one of them. So Article 2. Oh, here we... Article 2 and 3 are all about the MBTA, basically. And some of this is housekeeping within our bylaws that already exist. And we need to add little chapters and verses to be in compliance with not only the MBTA. There's more to this. And I know you, people are gonna have questions on town meeting floor and have at it, but I, I, I hope you can limit it and just, if most of us can sit back and listen, as opposed to get all worked up about something. If you haven't paid attention for the last couple of years on what's going on in Townsend regarding the MBTA stuff, on what statewide was going, if you've only passively listened to the news and you might be uninformed about what's happening with this stuff. But, um... This article starts out talking about accessory use or building. And some of... This is actually being deleted, this section here. By deleting from entitled word usage definition from the definition. And because the ADUs, accessory, ADU... I forgot what David stands for. But anyway, ADU, accessory. Basically, the old in-law apartments, they're gone. They, they've changed it to accessory, ADU, accessory something use. Oh, my gosh. Oh, accessory dwelling unit. Oh, see, I have brain fog tonight. Accessory dwelling unit is what an ADU is, which is, those have been already by state law allowed without, by right. Anybody can put one in, as long as there's just your regular building code requirements. And we have to make sure the wording in all the laws, the bylaws that we have, so that it doesn't get wrapped up in the endless cycle of building a department to ZBA and in sideways. And we, you know, the state law says this, our bylaws say that. Hold on. They need to be jived, so that if you're trying to do something on your property that you are absolutely allowed to do, you just want to be able to go down to the building department, file for your permit, or do it online. You don't even have to go to Town Hall for this anymore. Do a, a building permit, talk to them on the phone. If you need to send them plans, you can do that for whatever the normal course of business is. You don't have to say, "Well, our bylaws are messed up." So even though they're not, you know, in compliance with state law, we, we're gonna have to send you to the ZBA. You're gonna have to appeal the decision of the, even though there's no, it doesn't make any sense. So we have to pull all our bylaws that have to do with a lot of things. Just need to be edited. And some of this is what that is. Changing a lot of mumbo jumbo and changing terminology. And some of the terminology has to be changed, because old words mean new things. You know, everybody's gotta change things to improve them? Okay. Then we end up with a bunch of zoning bylaw changes, which if you've been following town meetings for years, zoning changes are the headache for everybody, because there are special rules to getting those voted through. And they're very lengthy articles. This is, no, this is showing page 1 of 13. But most of these 13 pages has got to do with Article 2 and 3. No kidding. Because it's zoning. I want to limit everything I'm gonna say, but I have to say some things. And, oh... There's just a lot of this that is... I don't want, I'm not trying to dissuade you from understanding things. But a lot of this is editing. And each little component doesn't make sense as it stands by itself. So I'm not trying, nor is anyone else trying to shove something down your throat without you understanding it. It's, it's just been, it's been vetted. It's been, more people have been looking at this and trying to get it through. And it's a constant moving target, if you will. But this has already been, all of this stuff has been in conversations. We've got Monticent Regional Planning Commission helping with this. We've got other people helping with this. Town Council has looked at this a couple of times, and things have been kicked back and redone, and back and forth, and forth and back. The Attorney General's Office, who's running the whole nightmare, really, with the MBTA Communities Act in requiring us to have a multifamily zoning, zoning. And I want to keep focused on that. We're only required at this time to have multifamily allowed zoning that meets her criteria that the Attorney General is watching for. So from everything I've been, I've, I've not watched every single moment of every single meeting, because zoning gives you headaches. It does. But I've watched most of it. And I'm just want to testify to you, the townspeople, that I'm not just talking out my butt. I'm not making things up. I'm not trying to trick you into anything. And neither is anyone else. This is just a lot of legal stuff, words. Some of this is, yeah, it, just doing this bylaws, you have to cover things. And it, the, the people that matter most in trying to read these things is like the buildings, excuse me, the building inspector, as well, who has to approve permits should they ever be pulled. The planning board, the zoning board of appeals, if things get to them. And the goal of this is to avoid that. I, I mean, let's do things, let's be able to have bylaws that make it easy. If you, I mean, we, we've been criticized terribly over the years as it making it so difficult for the process for people wanting to just go in, get a building permit, and move along. But our bylaws for years have been criticized as nothing's allowed, so you gotta appeal everything. And they're, they've really been working to clean that up. And I think they're doing really, really good at it. We've got a building inspector who's working very hard on that. And his interpretations, they're different sometimes, but I'm not gonna go there. But we've got many pages here of adding, let's see, "By adding to said section 42-1 subsection D entitled submission requirements." Okay. And this, because changing zoning requires, or zoning, the, not just changing zoning, but changing the bylaw regarding the zoning, requires, where, every word has to be read again just to make sure you got paragraph A, sub-paragraph B, Roman numerals, little, the VII stuff. You, you're gonna go, it's just, a lot of this is, okay. Uh, "Item 4 between the second and third sentences, the following new sentence, landscape plans for projects involving more than four units shall be prepared by a certified landscape architect registered in the..." Okay, that's great. You know, do we really, are we gonna sit up tonight at a meeting and go, "I don't know, that shouldn't be the..." Well, maybe some of these are required by law. And maybe some of these are in the best interest of the community. I know a lot of people are not, do not want the MBTA Communities Act stuff to come here, but it's here, we must do it. But regardless of that, some of the specific things that might seem weird to many of us looking at this, like, "I really don't care about the..." The landscaper, okay, it's gotta be in the bylaw. And it's in our best interest. We want, do we want a shabby-looking place? Or we're able to put something so specific, like, "Landscape plans for any projects that have more than four residential units shall be prepared by a certified landscape architect." That adds a layer of professionalism, so that, oh, my gosh, the landscape is going to be designed by an, an actual landscape architect? How cool! I, I, I mean, some of this stuff is dry. It's not something you and I are gonna, or should be staying up nights trying to figure this out. But this meeting on Thursday, the 25th, these, this article, it's Article 2 and 3, are really addressing the MBTA Communities Act stuff. Uh, it's not titled that specifically. It, there's just, that's just what the Act is, and this is how you implement it. This is strictly zoning. Zoning, so I, I want, everybody needs to understand, nobody's building anything. The bulldozers are not waiting outside of town, waiting to come in here and start planting a building. And the busloads of people coming in here to move it, not happening. Not happening. And I'm going to, I, I, I don't want to spend a lot of time on all these details. I mean, this gives measurements. How mu, 107 feet? Okay, nice. But this is, actually, this is delineating where this zone is going to be. Or it's already there, it's physically there. We're just gonna create a multifamily overlay district, MFOD. I don't know how you say that, but there it is. A multifamily overlay district is how this is being implemented. And let me tell you, I'm not gonna pull up maps and all this other stuff. Maybe we'll get some maps at town meeting, but I think it's kinda late for that. But I do invite everybody, you can go on the Town of Townsend's website. And there's more information than you need, but there's a lot. There's, if you're watching my video and you want a lot more information, "I want to see the maps, I want to see this, I want to see that", it's on the Townsend website. If you go right on the front page and you look at the special time meeting stuff, and as you follow the links, go slowly, in, within that, you don't have to go on a expedition, um, scavenger hunt to go finding this stuff. There's more than you even care about through those links to, to show all the stuff that's been done, which is tons and tons of information back and forth between the planning board and town council and Monticent Regional Planning Commission has been, um, we've had a guy, Joe. He's been coming to the meetings. And, and then town council screws everything up. I'm being funny, I'm joking. But yeah, I mean, a lot of stuff is done, and then town council has issues, so it has to go back. But that's just how it goes, that's life. That is why we have people, more than one person making these decisions. Because we have to have the Attorney General approve our final plan. We don't want to have another town meeting to fix this town meeting. So everything has been vetted by more people than usual. So, but this, Article 2 and 3, I mean, this goes on to definitions. So a lot of this is not... I, I hope we don't spend hours and hours on every little detail of this. Because there's nothing in here that's hidden, secret, that's gonna really put a bomb into Townsend or just make this worse than you think. It's not as bad as you think. And I think that they've worked very hard to make this with the least amount of impact on the community as a whole. I mean, this is, um... I mean, we've gotta do it, and I'll get into why. But it, it, there's just... I just want, you, you need to vote yes on Article 2 and 3, that's the bottom line. But I want to be clear with everybody that the MBTA Communities Act stuff in Article 2 and 3 is only zoning. There's no plan, there's no developer, there is not even a plan for a developer. This is only establishing an overlay district that would, in the event that a developer, or the owner of the property has any interest in doing this. This does not require multifamily housing to be built. Not for a second. It just creates an overlay district that may be allowed, or that is, will be allowed, but it doesn't say you can't do something else. Okay? There's no plan, this property that, it, all right, let me tell you where the property is, I haven't done that yet. If you, um, travel down 13 South, 13 South uh, is referred to as the south end of town, the, the south of 119. You take, go past, you know, Central Fire Station, down 13, all the way. Uh, if you're going to Walmart, or Hannaford's, and, or you're going to Fitchburg, I should say. Lunenburg, Fitchburg, that's where you go. You follow that almost, right, well, right up to the Lunenburg Line, on the right-hand side. You'll see this, before you say, see the sign that says, "Welcome to Lunenburg", you'll, there's, there's land, you'll see this unused land, that's over there on the right. There's a lot of, like, what I might call open space, or there's houses like, that are hidden by trees. It's pretty cool down there. But it's on the outer limits of Townsend. It's almost in Lunenburg. So the impact on us is minimal, at best. But this property is just not, it's on the right-hand side, heading south. It's owned by a private person, or it's owned by a family trust. The property is owned by the family that owns Townsend Ford. Unless they've sold, and I don't think that happens. It's not owned by the town. There isn't a developer who owns the property. The property is not for sale. It is, it is just not, there's nothing going on here. There's no secret, there's nobody in town who's behind this to sneak in some way to make money and screw the townspeople. Not happening. This is just the best place they came up with. Out of every inch of the town that they looked at for the possibility of just a lot, putting an overlay district to allow someday somebody to come in and build multifamily housing that meets the criteria of the MBTA Communities Act, which is putting a whole bunch of apartments, I want to say, similar, but not exactly, okay? All right, don't, don't make this comparison, because I'm, I'm making this comparison, and I'm wrong even doing it, but I'm gonna do it anyway. But you've got something like Pine Ridge, and maybe even Country Estates. These are multifamily dwellings that were built, uh, decades ago. And this is kind, but the, the, all the mumbo jumbo and all these bylaw things is, provides a better vision, if you will, of utilization of the land. And the MBTA Communities Act requires a certain number of parcels, oh, wait a minute, is it here, or is it? Oh, no, it's up here. Sorry, this is spinning too fast for you. Close your eyes if you have to, if I'm going too fast. It requires, yep, I missed it. Where's the, there's a little table here somewhere. Oh, here we go. The maximum density is 15 units per acre. And that's the, what they're kinda looking at from the MBTA Communities Act, is they want cities and towns that are part of the MBTA Communities thing to have enough, build housing that is gonna satisfy population needs. And this is, this is there. And I, I expect people to just speak out against, "Why do we need this? How can they do this to us? I know, just, we're gonna get past it, we have to get past that." We're required to do this, but, all right, staying on topic here. The, this is strictly a zoning thing that we have to pass. We do not have to build a thing. And this is not another slam dunk. Well, once we pass this, then they're gonna make us build something. No, we can't build something on property that's owned by someone else. It's privately owned, there is no secret plan to make, get a developer to take over this property. The property used to be, if you've been here as long as I have, um, on that property, used to be Townsend Ford Annex. Townsend Ford used to have a used car lot down there. That's what they used it for decades ago. You know, the car business kinda, I don't know, it didn't go belly up or anything, but it's, things changed in the business and for some reason, whatever their reasons were, I don't know, they're business reasons, not my reasons, they're business reasons, which are none of our business, but they closed that down, and you can't even tell it was there anymore. But, um... And there's been commercial uses and that stretch, that whole stretch of road, um, that's not, that whole stretch of road isn't in the zone, in the overlay district, but a chunk of it. You can go on to the website, like I said, and try to fi, and you can figure it, you don't have to try. It's there, where you can see on maps, and you could see exactly what they've been talking about. Um, the pictures and stuff are not part of the warrant article, but you can, um, go out and, and look it up. And this chart here shows maximums and minimums. So the maximum height of, oh, I just bit my tongue. Three stories, and the maximum density is 15 units per acre. But up to 100 and something units, or 100, yeah, 100 and something units. But that's just zoning. That doesn't mean we have to build anything. And I just want to keep saying that over and over and over. And I want to tell you, there is no secret plan. I'm not an agent of the town. Nobody's trying to get me to do this. I'm telling you, there is no secret plan to move in a developer next month and just start building apartments everywhere. Not happening. This is strictly a zoning thing that we critically must... that we critically must pass. This is, the, the state didn't tell us where to do it. The planning board and all their consultants found this space to be the best space to meet all the needs of the town. And you're probably going to have questions about, well, we need town water down there. Sure do. And you don't have it right now. So that means nobody's building anything. You can't build this without water and sewage. That's okay. It doesn't have to be there now. So that, I, I, I want to put that into your minds as another guarantee that the bulldozers aren't coming in next week. There's so much that would have to be done to actually build something. But we're not having a developers conference at town meeting. We're having a town meeting for us to just approve zoning. Developers have to figure out all that other BS. Only if the property owner wants it to happen. You got it? Property owner hasn't been part of this because they don't, I don't even want to talk to them. I mean, if they were interested in this, I guess they could come to town meeting and say, whoa, wait a minute. Or, yeah, man, I mean, they may not care. And because it's in a family trust. Holding real estate is a great investment. I'm not, I'm trying, I don't want to try to speak for them, but trying to figure out why I'm not hearing from them, you know what? None of my business. This is strictly a zoning article. Now, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna go any deeper into the actual. If we get all tied up, I mean, read this stuff. I'm not telling, trying to dissuade you from being more educated about this. But a lot of this is a little bit of minutia, minutia that has been vetted through the planning board with all the legal mumbo jumbo requirements that the MBTA Communities Act requires. Everybody's looked at this. I'm sure at some point in the future, you know, somebody's going to find some editing that needs to be done and we'll be back to fix it. Okay, but there, there won't be a substantial change from what's being presented on the twenty fifth. Okay, but a lot of this is, okay. Except for units containing zero or no bedrooms, no parking area. Wonderful. This, whatever they, they can't design the building in, as part of this. We can't make a building design in a zoning article. That's a developer, building inspector issue. And even if there's design issues that might even go to the ZBA at some point. But we're not there. This is way ahead of the game. We're only doing zoning. I know I sound like a broken record, but the reason that I have a brick wall behind me. You're not, you can't see it right now, but I'm doing this video using the brick wall picture behind me because sometimes I have to repeat myself because there's a brick wall in front of me or something. I just, no building anything. This is strictly zoning. And it's a small area. It's not like we're redoing Timberly Park with multifamily housing. That's another video. That's another, maybe in a couple of years we might do that. No, I'm kidding. No, I'm making a joke. Don't start that rumor. But, okay, it's just zoning an overlay district on the outskirts of town that will have almost no impact if they build it. Almost no impact on Townsend because they're not going to be coming up. They're going to be going down to Walmart. They're going to be a pain in the neck to Lunenburg. They're hardly going to touch us. But we're going to get tax revenue and that's where I really care about. If we build something, we get tax revenue. Property taxes on buildings is what we absolutely must have. And that's a whole nother talk, but we need people to build things in Townsend so that we can get more tax revenue, so we can cut this overdraft, over, override conversation going. Get that out of here and get more tax revenue the normal way. Okay. Now, I'm going to tell you, if you guys decide, screw you Cindy, we're not listening to you or anybody else. We're going to vote this down. The state can stick it up their nose. We don't, just because the state's telling us what to do, we are not doing it. Screw them. If you do that, which a couple of towns, there's only a couple of towns that are doing that. And they're spending a lot of money on legal fees to fight the state. And I'm going to give you an example of what they're losing. There's a price to pay. And it's been vetted, it's gone to court, it's gone to the state supreme court or the the state supreme court is called this SJC, the Supreme Judicial Court is what we call our highest court in Massachusetts. It's gone up and down the chain in the appeals court process. And the AG's office wins every time. And we must comply. The towns that are fighting are fighting and spending millions in legal fees. I'm sure they're in the millions just to fight something. And, and then what happens, part of the MBTA Communities Act cuts grants. You, you lose access to grants. And for those of you that might not know what that means to us, it's disastrous. We have a lot of grants that, um, what I'm going to do, I have to take this down. I'm going to pull up a list. I have a slide. Let me go back here. I'm going to bring me back. I'm going to take this down for a minute. Stop screen. I'm going to pull up. Oh, a new thing that shows the grant money that we would lose. I think that's it. Here it is. Um, oh, there it is. Okay. Nope, that's not it. Oh, okay, I'll find it. I know, you see it, I just don't. Okay, I'm going to shut that down. Can't shut that, oh, here it is. See, I have all this stuff on my computer. You don't see it, but I do. Okay. These are grants that we currently get. And we get them repeatedly. Some of these are one-time deals and some of these are, we get these every year. I'm going to start with the two hundred thousand, the one nine 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 five oh. The Green Communities, we get approximately two hundred thousand dollars a year from the state to provide us with much-needed energy improvements in municipal buildings. Because we apply for it every year. We've been working in our energy committee, has been diligently working on ways to continue to get this grant. If we do not comply with the MBTA Communities Act, we are no longer eligible, excuse me, to apply for this grant. So we, and most of these grants, if we don't get them, we're, we have to replace it. We have to replace the money. We can't just say, okay, no big deal. No, no, we have to fund it some other way. And I'm going, going through some of these. And these add up to just under one point four million dollars. And I just want to remind you that we've turned down overrides that are four hundred thousand. So this is one point, one million, four hundred thousand. And if we're going to be losing this money from grants, this is money that supplements our spending. These are things that we use and we need in order to survive, in order to run the town. These are critical grants that we get. The Green Communities is a big one. The act goes into infrastructure to keep our energy costs, our energy improvements. And there, a lot of them, you know, I'm going to say some of it's downright maintenance. I don't have, I'm not going to pull up all the details on every one of these grants, but, uh, we get public safety grants. There's two grants here. We got, um, an equipment grant for the fire department, over thirteen thousand dollars for fire truck nozzles. They kind of need functional nozzles on the hoses. You don't want the water to go just about anywhere. They need to direct it if you have a fire. And we've had a few house fires in Townsend in the last year or two. We need this. Equipment grant, AED. Oh, what's an AED? That's an automatic defibrillator. You have a heart attack or a family member has a heart attack. They need AEDs to bring you back, to start your heart up again. And if we don't, I mean, we have to have the equipment. They can't just say, well, we can't get them anymore. No, we have to have the equipment. So if we don't get grants for the equipment, we have to pay for it ourselves out of the tax base. Okay, we had, we got a half a million dollar grant, uh, from the state for the Greenville Bridge was replaced last year. And that, um, that's half a million. We won't be eligible to apply for that if we don't pass the MBTA. Sustainable Materials Recovery Program. That's really big words for part of the recycling center funding, the ninety six hundred. That is, you know, all those big roll-off dumpsters that if you go up there at the recycling center and you bring all your crap and they charge you a little bit of money. But a lot of that is part, some, a chunk is from the, this grant, ninety six hundred that we really need. I mean, we're already paying, charging more for trash pickup. If we lose any grants for the Board of Health. In fact, I think we might even lose the purple, we're getting, we got a grant for the Purple Bag Program. We wouldn't even be eligible people. So we'd be paying more for trash. Wild and Scenic Rivers Council, we have a, we have a dam here, Adams Dam, Adams Dam. And we got a little bit of money to work on that. These are things we would not be eligible for. The state formula grant, our council on aging, the senior center gets a lot of grants. Some, some of the grants are not from the state, some of them are. There's two here. One is a formula grant, which based, the formula is based on how many our population in a population of senior citizens. Who's being hit with this? And we're, and the utilization of this senior center and it's huge. We get a lot of people come in there. And we get almost seventeen thousand dollars for that. We get some, some number every year out of the state formula grant from council and aging. Also, you know that senior bus that's running around? There's two of them now. The council and aging bus, that comes from Lowell Regional Transit Authority. But we get the bus grant of seventy two thousand dollars. Just that goodbye. Like if we want to keep having that bus, we either have to charge the seniors a lot of money to get on the bus. It's like, I'd rather buy a car and drive myself. I, there's other, call it Uber, it's cheaper than if we have to pay for it. So we can't, these are things that we just, we would have to absorb. The taxpayers are going to have to come up with this money. Oh, here's another twenty thousand for council and aging. So this is over a hundred thousand dollars just for senior center base. I'm going to just say senior center. I'm probably exaggerating. That's not right, Cindy. I don't care. I'm just trying to compress information. ADA Improvement Grant, they updated, we have to, we have to have an ADA transition plan to identify, the, the ADA coordinator identifies properties or things that we need to do to improve accessibility for all kinds, all kinds of things. I'm not going to go deep into that. But there's all kinds of things that we need to continuously improve on. And it's called the ADA Transition Plan. And we get a grant. This last one for twenty twenty four was a hundred and ten thousand to help the town improve accessibility, to be in compliance with the law. But not only that, to be, to help people who need to access, access different parts of our community. And we get that, that'll, just that goodbye. Community Compact Grant, this last one, uh, these are changing anyway, but the IT, it's the last, we usually get, apply, we apply almost every year for a community compact grant. And this is about what we usually get. But this last one was for IT-related improvements, which I'm telling you, we need a lot more. We've had a lot of it done over the last decade, but we need a lot more. This is a drop in the bucket of what we really need, but the last one was a hundred and seventy three thousand dollars. We don't have this kind of money laid around to stay, to even catch up. We're in the twenty first, we're a quarter of the way through the twenty first century. And we're not, we're still behind the curve on IT. We still have a lot more improvements that need to happen. I'm not going to go there, but IT is a big pet peeve of mine and it has been for years. But anyway, I'm going to move on. Then the Mass Trails Grant. Oh. Wait a minute. But this came to the town in order to incorporate the rail trail. We had to, um, build the side, if you go down the harbor, they had some construction down there and they, they built sidewalk. Um, I think it's done. I might be, I don't, yeah, I think it's done. Sometimes I go through there, I don't pay attention or I don't go that way. Sometimes I go around Proctor Road to come to West Townsend. That's actually shorter in case you didn't know that. Um, but this, they built, around that whole intersection, they upgraded and they put a, a solid sidewalk down, I forgot how far it went, but, um, this had been going, been worked, being worked on for geez, since I was on the board. So, yeah, ten years that that's been, uh, trying to get that going. So we got a hundred sixty thousand for that. Just that kind of stuff goodbye. We need to be able to get these grants. Mass Cultural Council Grant, ongoing, nine thousand. We have a cultural council, um, which you, you, you really should pay attention to, especially if you're involved with any nonprofit work. But they get money from the state in order to divvy out to nonprofits within Townsend, which actually benefits all of us. So, um, it's not just some kind of frivolous thingy. Um, I'm going to move this a little so I can see. Okay. All right. Um, then we have the municipal fiber. Alright, that, I, I'm very loosely going to call that IT, fiber optic infrastructure. That's a communications thing. It's over my head, but there's another hundred and ten thousand. Hello? And then we have MVP Grant, Climate Resistant Drainage. Now, a lot of people think climate action doesn't apply to us. Oh, that's all, it's a bunch of garbage and it doesn't have anything to do with us. It does because it's climate, whether it's climate, don't get all wrapped up around the axel on climate change. But we, we have like right now, I'll give you an example. We're in a drought. If you haven't noticed, it's hardly rained all summer. We are in a serious drought. But we go from one extreme to the other. Now, if we get a few days of heavy rain, guess what we're going to have? We're going to have heavy flooding because the water has, it, it's just not going to get soaked in right. And we've had serious floods in the harbor. Since I've lived here, we've had some terrible flooding. Um, the region has lost bridges, big time lost bridges. But these, the climate action master plan is, um, this particular one, it was drainage. And we need, it's, I hope I'm not messing up my thing. I'm not, um, that's a hundred, over a hundred fifty thousand dollars. So these are, some of these are repeat grants and some of these are examples of grants we of one kind or another that we get. And these are the most recent one. Karen from, uh, he's not, what, what is his? I don't, I forgot what, what his actual job title was. But Karen Meehan, he, he, he put this chart together and it has more pictures of who, what communities are MBTA grant, but he, he created this list to show us what we lose if we don't put in, if we don't allow the MBTA Communities Act stuff, Articles two and three to pass in the town of Townsend. And I follow up with this kind of discussion. Excuse me, to say um, if we vote down the Community, MBTA Communities Act, we're giving up more than a million dollars in grants. And I want you to think about everything else in our budget. The Board of Selectmen have repeatedly, sometimes more than once a year, tried to get us, tried to put through an override. And because of, um, it doesn't matter. I don't want to get into the politics on that too much. But they're crying poverty all the time and we're crying, stop spending our money. But this just adds to the problem. These are things. These are things that we, we get grants to do things we really need to do. This isn't like a free-for-all, oh, we're gonna do something special. We're gonna grant to do something we didn't need. No, we get grants to do things we do need. And this is one point four million dollars worth of stuff we need and we can't afford to lose. If we lose these, the ability, we can't even apply for these grants, people. If we lose these, the ability to even apply for these grants, we're going to have to absorb the cost. And that means we need one point four million dollars more than we have going forward, which means uh, override? Without a question, if you're against an override, then you better be in favor of the MBTA Communities Act. And I say that lovingly, my cat just jumped on the dresser. Okay. For everybody that's watching, that knows about my stray cat, well, I have two stray cats, but Tiger, just he's Tiger the Terror, that's what I call him, Tiger the Terror. But anyway, it, you know, I'm not in favor of the override stuff. I mean, if you, if you presented me, I don't wanna get into politics, but if you presented me to something that made sense to me without secrecy and hidden budget discussions, I might be in favor of something. But this, voting down the MBTA Communities Act is it's self-imposed disaster. You, you, you know, we should have a, a meeting that has, okay, Communities Act, if you don't pass the Communities Act, you must pass the override. So that should be side-by-side questions, so you understand, you have to vote. How you vote impacts the other one. So, but you need to understand it that way, that if you don't pass the Communities Act, you gotta pass a mil, two million dollar, two million dollar override. I'm not kidding. I'm not just trying to scare anybody. I'm not talking BS. I'm saying we lose, they, it's already been through the court system, the towns that have lost these grants, they're not getting them. And some of these communities that have been fighting, they're actually more affluent communities. If you look up the towns, I don't have them up there, I think Milton was one, but these, some of the, the communities that are fighting and spending all these legal fees, they are affluent communities. They got the money. They don't want the, the apartments because oh, we're, we don't want, we're mil, our houses are, you know, our average house price is a million dollars here. This will lower it. We need to stay affluent. We don't wanna be. Where our house prices are half a million dollars. Their pr, their homes at the bottom, at the average is like a million. So they're, they're apples and oranges to us. Anyway, we do not have the money to fight the fight and we don't have the money. And I'm not saying if we did, we should. No, we need to pass the MBTA Communities Act. It's strictly about zoning. I'm gonna say that one more time, zoning or not building a thing. All right, I'm gonna get this out of here, remove and remove, stop screen. Now I gotta pull, I'm not done with this meeting. Uh, I gotta add, gonna bring the thing back. The way I do it, it's a pain, I know. I'm sorry. I think, hopefully, words, is that it? I think we got it. It's back. I gotta close that one. I gotta find it again. That's not it. Oh, is this it? That's it. Hey, I found it. I gotta move it so I can see it. All right, I'm on page eight of thirteen. I'm gonna go back to I'm gonna make this bigger, because I think it would be easier on your eyes if I made it bigger, right? Okay, yeah, I think we're good here. All right. So I don't wanna go back to the, I wanna move on from MBTA, MBTA Communities, because all this is zoning language. And if you really, I mean, between now and next Thursday, next Thursday, the twenty-fifth, you wanna read all this word for word and understand it, be my guest. It's not gobbledygook, it's good stuff, it's but a lot of it is the legality stuff of zoning. And everything will be fine. All right? If you have questions, ask them on Thursday. Ask them before that. I think that land use, if Beth might be, is up there at Town Hall, she might have the ability to talk to you, I don't know. But go online, everything you could possibly wanna know is online. Oh. A missing, wait a minute. Oh yeah, multifamily overlay district, that's all the MBTS. Okay, and this is just fixing language. Some of it's housekeeping. And I, I try not to get involved with housekeeping. All right, Article Four. This is um, to see if the town will vote to amend Chapter Fifty-four, the town's bylaws entitled Historic District by adding a new section that allows the building inspector to be the enforcing official. This is something that was not in our bylaws. And it probably would have been easier on everybody had it been for years. It only was discovered that it wasn't in our bylaws when um, there was a conflict between the Historic District Commission and the Building Inspector. And, and everybody, one big happy family, not so much, went to the ZBA and Town Council came, Adam Costa came. And he, I, I think it was, thank goodness, he was there. Because he explained a lot and he did, he's the one that brought this up that says, you don't have this. The building inspector does, is not your person that makes these determinations. And I think it would have saved us a lot of aggravation over the years. Um, because everything was put on the Historic District Commission to enforce and there was just no way that they could we get, they, they commit, it was a nightmare, really. So this puts it on, not only does it authorize, but it puts it on the building inspector. We have properties that are historic in Townsend and we are limited, there's all these rules, and the building inspector in most communities is the one with the authority to look at a building permit and say, no, or yes, because are you in compliance with the Historic District bylaws? Okay. I don't wanna spend a lot of time on this, but this is a housekeeping article. And the Historic District Commission, I believe, is in favor of this. I'm almost surprised the select board put it in, but I guess they would. Who knows? But this is, just everybody wants it that has any involvement with it. It doesn't change our lives at all. Probably makes it easier for all of us. Article Five. This one, I'm actually against it, and I'm gonna explain why, but let me read it to you. To see if that, that town will vote to accept provisions of Master of Law, Chapter Fifty-three, Section Eighteen B, which requires the town to print certain information related to each question that shall appear on the town ballot as further specified in said statute and not later than seven days before an election, at which such question shall be submitted to the voters, send such information to each, each household wherein a person whose name appears on the current voting list for the town resides or to take any other action in relation thereto. So this is uh, money, there's no money being voted on, but this is a big expense. If you haven't noticed, postage has gone up. And we're trying to cut expenses at Town Hall. I'm not like speaking for Town Hall. I'm saying as a resident and taxpayer, we're trying to cut expenses, not add to the problem. This adds to the problem. Some people might say, Cindy, we want this. What are you talking about? No, we don't want this, because that means there's more than three thousand households in this town. We have over six thousand voters. So the town clerk has to, um, well, she has the ability, he, he can pull up this information, everything's computerized these days, he can pull up the database and get the mailing list and make this happen. It's a lot more work for him and his office, but he, it's doable. But, and then mail to each and every household. First, somebody has to come up with the information that needs to be mailed. So every time we have a town ballot, we have a town election in April. And we also have, which sometimes it's questions, if there's no questions, then there's nothing to to, there's no mailing. But every time we have an override, everybody in town has to get invite, a personal invitation and an explanation on what that's about. And there's a lot of conflict with how this thing gets written up. And there's potential for breaking laws if they don't say the right thing. They can't, you can't advocate for certain things. You can't advocate, I want, if you, you know, if you don't vote for an override, we're, we're gonna, you, you're not gonna get an ambulance to your house. That's the, you can't put that in there. And that's some of the things that are being said out there by town officials. You can't put that in a, in writing and send it to everybody's house. And so I think, you know, you gotta decide who's gonna write this thing, who's gonna write the explanation. This is to, makes things like, when there's a state election, we get a ballot book. If there's questions on the state ballot, we get a, a informational packet that we go through all these questions. And that's coming from the state. The town's not paying for that. That's coming from the state. Sometimes we read them, sometimes they get chucked right into recycling. And, or we just look at things that might interest us. We might have our mind made up on the questions on the ballot already, so we don't really need that on the statewide ballot. The townwide one, this is a big expense. Cause we got like six thousand voters and in a town election, we get like four hundred people vote. Sometimes on, on, when there's an override, this might be closer to two. Uh, we're spending a lot of money and it's more trash. All these ballot books, the informational stuff is gonna go to recycling. More paper, more, I, come on. So, but the postage is just a lot, a lot of money. And I think, I, I, I mean, I know, um, this was submitted by the select board. I know that the people that want this, I think Laura Schifrin was pretty outspoken at the last selectman's meeting that she really wants this. It might have been her idea. I have no idea. I don't know. I didn't follow it back that far. But I know she's really an outspoken supporter of this. Um, I'm not. Um, some people would benefit from this, but it's a minority, which that doesn't mean we can't do it. The cost, cost-effective business is low, it's bad. And I, if I'm gonna counter this with a different idea and that, I, I've, I've said, I've complained for over a year, that we do not have a public information plan. We do not have a communication plan in Townsend. It's just, we wing it. And it just doesn't work well at all. The town does not have any, any social media accounts. I, I'm saying the town as a whole, Town Hall, the Water Department does, they have their own uh, Facebook page or Facebook thing. Uh, the Fire Department, actually, yes, they do. The Fire Department does. The Police Department has, the, the Police Department does. Uh, I mean, because the town doesn't, each of these departments have developed their own and they're following, as I've read them, they are following, you have to follow ethics, you have to follow public records and you have to follow, make sure that you're also in compliance with open meeting laws to, in order to manage these accounts. And they're doing, all those departments are doing a good job. Uh, some of them walk the line, but in the Town Hall, coming from what I'm gonna say, the Board of Selectmen's Office, somehow, under that umbrella, they should have a social media plan, not policy, a plan using the Select Board Office. Town Hall needs a plan to disseminate information through social media means. The social media owned by the town, not oh, well, there's a, there's a couple of Facebook pages, we send stuff to them and they take care of that. No, 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 because that's only a small percentage of people in Townsend that are on, God knows what page you decided to use today. They're not owned and operated by the Town of Townsend and they have nothing to do with the town. They're private people that have have uh, Facebook pages. I have Townsend, what's going on, part two, that I'm the admin for that. And nobody sends me anything, so everybody that's in town that's on my page doesn't, you know, sometimes some things get, some of the, the kid stuff, some people are putting things on my, on the, on the group and it, which is fine, which is great, I wanna see it. But um, but that's not the same as the town having their own. If, and you can have a Facebook page, it's not, you don't do a Facebook group, you do a Facebook page. The town would do a Townsend, Town of Townsend official. I think we might be the only town in Massachusetts that doesn't do this already. But you put these things on Facebook, on a social media account, you can be on X too, Twitter, I still call it Twitter. But you can have a Twitter account, an Instagram account. And what, I, I, I refer to the government use of social media accounts as, these are postcard pages. And that refers to a term that's used regarding websites. If you're gonna develop a website in your business, they, sometimes they'll recommend you do a postcard webpage, which just has, it doesn't have a lot of stuff to scroll around on. You gotta find stuff. The stuff about your business, put a, you know, you condense everything into a postcard. That's a website thing, and I'm only borrowing the term postcard to bring over to social media. So it's an announcement only where somebody in Town Hall can put something on the Town of Townsend's Facebook page. And as, this is what's happening. We have an election next week. We have a special town meeting next Thursday. We have um, Town Hall's gonna be closed, or there's, the zoning board is having a meeting. We're having the Select Board's meeting and here's a link to their agenda. We're having uh, God knows what, but official only, not nonprofits, not nonprofits, which unfortunately, I'm unhappy that the town uses the, our town website, government resources to support nonprofits. I think that's wrong. But I'm not running the place. But the Facebook page, as an example, would be announcement only, there's no comments. Nobody can say anything. If you have a concern about what's on the Facebook page, you contact Town Hall and complain. But the Facebook page is not a bunch of comments, where people are arguing and pissing and moaning. It's strictly the town putting out important information. What's really good about that is if you're on Facebook, most of us are, you, when you follow, you, you, when you follow a page, you also set your notification settings. So that, hey, I'm gonna follow the Town of Townsend's Facebook page. I'm gonna set the notifications so that I get notified every time they post something. Or I do some kind of digest form, I don't, you know, but I'm gonna, I wanna be notified whenever the Town of Townsend posts something on Facebook. And then the Facebook algorithm can screw that up in a heartbeat, but it's not as bad as if you don't have one. Having a website is not as beneficial as a social media site because I have to actively go to the Townsend website to find out what's going on. And sometimes if I haven't been on there in a few days, whatever, you know, I'll find something that I didn't know about, that And sometimes if I haven't been on there in a few days, whatever, you know, I'll find something that I didn't know about that happened yesterday that I would have been interested in. So having a Facebook page, it's gotta be dedicated, the town has to operate it. The admin is an employee of the town who's managing it within the rules, which is public records, you can't delete, I mean, public records and open meeting law and ethics. Those basic rules and any state law that applies to social media page. So, um, that is better than mailing stuff. Yes, I agree, there are some people who are not on the internet. There are some people that have older flip phones that aren't smart at all. I don't, you know, a- actually, I think they've done away with the flat, the flat, nothing on them cell phones. I don't think you can get those anymore. I think everything now has internet capability, whether you use it or not is up to you. But then you have the smartphones, which iPhones and the other ones, I, I have an iPhone, so it's the only one I can think of when I have brain fog right now. Oh, gosh, I need to go outside, I'm not gonna get there today. Um, so I'm not in favor of this article. I just say, thank you for the thought, uh, it's, it's a thought. But I think it's too expensive for, the bang for the buck is only in my pocketbook. My wallet's gonna get emptied for no reason. And I would probably say, okay, if we're gonna do this, I want an opt out list. I wanna opt out. I want half the town to opt out. If you don't want this junk mail, I wanna opt out. And I think that makes it even more expensive, cause now, oh, that's another database. So somebody's gonna manage that database. First, you gotta know that you're on it. If you're gonna put me on a mailing list, I wanna consent. I wanna consent to being on a mailing list. I don't want you to mail me shit. It's bad enough, I have to get a tax bill and a water bill in the mail. That's a bad enough. Can you email it to me? No. If you can't email it to me, I don't want it. I mean, I, I have to get my tax bill, cause they have to send it to me. So there you have that. But this is a bulldoggle on money we don't have. This is another reason, another thing on the list of things we need an override for, because we don't have the money for this. And this would be enacted this fiscal year now. So i- if they do another special election for an override, this, we had, need the, we need an override just to pay for the mailing. I mean, stop. So I'm not in favor of this. I've spent more time on this article than I wanted to. But here it is, I know, I think we're over an hour. I'm, I'm past my limit, but I'm still going, cause this is important. Alright, so I'm voting no on Article Five, and I ask that you also vote no. Not because, okay, I wanna commend whoever came up with it, nice thought, too much money. You know, we, let's do alternative ways of getting, you need to, the Town of Townsend leadership needs to work on a communication plan. And I ask, I'll, I'll, let me shout out to town hall, I'd be happy to serve on that committee. Even if there, it's a loosely, it's just people that, if you want my input, I'll give it to you. I'll give you my input as a, for part of a communication plan, okay? But this is, this doesn't, this, Article Five doesn't suit me. I'm against it. Article Six. Where's, um, I'm gonna pause because my throat's, okay, um, I took a little break there, I, I paused this thing, so in case you see a glitch. Um, I paused this and we're gonna get into Article Six now, which is, this is the last article. I know it's been more than an hour that I've been babbling on, but when we do town meeting reviews, this is really important stuff that you're not gonna get anywhere else. There's no one else doing this but me. And I just wanna, um, share my opinion on Article Six. I am vehemently, my cat is bothering me now. Undivided attention, you're not getting it right now. Okay, I'm giving my undivided attention to the townspeople to tell you why I'm vehemently opposed to Article Six. This is a citizen's petition. And I'm gonna read it to you. But, um, this is called, which, this is something that is called spot zoning. And it's going, it's, its goal is to disrupt a plan that's already being enacted upon. And it's not only spot zoning, it's NIMBY reactionary assault on the town. And, I mean, I'm being extreme here, but so is this article. This is an extreme article. And it is, in order to undo things that town meeting has already approved, it's to spot zone one lot. One lot, it's to change what it's already been designated for. And to prohibit the town from following the plans that have years of work has already been put in to this plan. And I know I'm kinda taking a roundabout way, but let me read this. To see if the town will vote to amend section one forty-five dash twenty-six residential districts, append text at the end of one forty-five twenty-six B fourteen. Notwithstanding of this bylaw, to the contrary, an apartment multifamily building as defined by one forty-five five is prohibited on the following parcels, assessors map ten parcel fifty-two Blood Road and assessors map ten parcel seventy, West Elm Street. So I amend one forty-five dash forty-seven open space multi-family development, O S M D. Insert at the end of one forty-five forty-seven B, the provisions of this section shall not apply to the assessors map ten parcel fifty-two and assessors map ten parcel seventy. Those are two sections of the same, um, bylaw that's already in place. And they wanna upend it and just say, oh no, you can't do that here. Uh, so it's spot zoning under NIMBY rules. What is NIMBY? Not in my backyard. And this is literally, the citizen's petition was initiated by an abutter to this property. Oh no, we don't want anybody moving there, we want that to be open space. We don't want, no, we gotta disrupt anything that's being planned there. So, uh, somebody can come in and put A, A, single family house. They, I mean, they wanna, this, this is, we've already voted at town meeting. This property, that, this, this land, it's at the corner of West Elm and Blood Road. It's trees right now, just a bunch of trees. And up the corner of this property is actually has an easement by the water department. They're putting in, uh, water, either a pumping station or a water tower or something in one corner of it. So we're gonna have some construction there anyways in the next couple, three years. Um, I'm not sure when they're actually making it work, making it happen, but that, the corner of that property is part of the water department's future plan, the plan of extending the water line up Lunenburg Road. And they have to be able to pump it, cause it's all uphill. I live on West Elm, so I'm very familiar with this little corner of the universe. It's my, I've been living here forty-four years. I know this corner of the universe very well. But the, they're gonna be putting something up in the, to pump water uphill so that all those people up Lunenburg Road that are complaining this summer about their wells being dry because of the drought can, can decide to get on town water, which they really should because of all the PFAS. But that's a different, that's not what I'm here for. Article Six has nothing to do with town water. But that's part of, this property actually is inclusive of that construction that will be happening there. And it's already, y- you can't vote that out. You have to allow it because it's public, um, infrastructure required to survive, in order to live. We must have water, so that is part of this as well, but this is not, they're not addressing that in this article. They're only wanted, put this in so that one family doesn't have to live next door to this. And I'm just appalled, but that's different. I, I just wanna talk about what this is about. Right now, this property is, well, it's owned by the town. I need to double check and make sure that I am in fact recording. You know, I did a whole video this afternoon, I talked to myself for an hour. Do you know who I talked to? Nobody, just me. I didn't hit the record button. I babbled on for an hour, no video exists. So I gotta double check and make sure I hit the record button. So here we are, this article, alright, the property at the corner of West Elm and Blood Road um, is currently, it's been transferred. It's still town owned, sorta, but it's transferred over to the Townsend Affordable Housing Trust. We did that, I think, a year ago, might even be longer than that. I, I, I didn't pull up the documents, I didn't think I needed to go into this much detail. But that is who owns it, or is it response, it is, cause it's in a trust. So it's, it actually is in the registry of deeds. Uh, they were just recently getting that registered, so if you went onto the registry of deeds today, I don't know that it's been posted yet, but it's been filed. As far as I know, they filed that paperwork already. Um, so that's it. The Townsend Affordable Housing Trust owns this property. So, and it was transferred to them, guess why? Uh, to build affordable housing. Okay? That's the whole purpose. The town, us, the voters, we gave that property to the Affordable Housing Trust in order to develop it for affordable housing. And they have been working for over a year on something, on to make something happen. I got another cat jumping on my, uh, okay. So, and they've been, you know, I, I wanna give you a little bit of history between me and the Townsend Affordable Housing Trust. Our history isn't that good, but it has nothing to do with the mission, okay? We sometimes dicker at each other, but they're probably freaking out because I keep telling them how much I love them. I don't love them as people, I, but I love their mission. I, I, I think that what, the work that they're doing, I actually approve of. I sometimes don't allot like the means that they take and sometimes I pound my head on the table, like, I don't believe they're doing this, this way. But they're doing, what they're doing is in the best interests of the Town of Townsend. And they're really, I think, I'm actually gonna call them NIMBY people because they are really thinking they're more protective than I would be. Um, and I'm, I'm, I am protective, I understand. I open my mouth about things that I agree and disagree with on zoning. And I think some of our zoning is too restrictive and we're opening it up in little corners, which is good. And it's in the best interest of the town. But there are some people that think a- any change is bad when you have no idea what change means, actually. Um, the town has always changed in the best interest of the town. And I think, I do believe that those folks that are on the Townsend Affordable Housing Trust, they're, what they're talking about up on this property is really a good plan. And it's in the best interest of the town. They do not have a formal plan right now, yet. They are in the development of a plan, they're not development like building anything right now. They're putting it, the plan together, okay? So the bulldozers aren't lined up on West Elm Street, ready to go up Blood Road and start tearing everything apart. I mean, they're coming, no, well, someday. Though, it, it takes, I've been listening to housing plans for fifteen years and I haven't seen anybody break ground yet. On a lot of stuff, um, so I'm not losing any sleep about this. But the Townsend Affordable Housing Trust, over the last year and a half, have been working on what they, they refer to as a concept of what, to put up there, put up there. And if you're familiar with the area, um, they're looking at maybe, this is just concept, not, this is what we're doing. It's concept, yeah, I think I like this, this might work. But everything, it, nothing gets really planned until you have a developer who's gonna be playing the game. And it's not like we hiring a builder to take care of things. You gotta find a developer that it's in their best interest. Developing housing is not, this is nothing even closely related to MBTA communities fifteen units and an acre. This, this is a whole nother, this is, this is more tame, this is tame, tame, tame. And, but what they're looking at, the concept they're looking at is, I'm gonna refer to as cul-de-sac, kind of. Or in a circle like that. There's some, it's, it kind of, what the plans that I had seen them looking at, not, they're not plans, concrete in concrete. They're just, this would be kinda cool, this would fit. Yeah, I mean, it was kind of along the lines of cul-de-sac. And of course, in the property right now, I mean, there's town water, I think, there's, there's town water right there. Or, or they, they can get hooked up, it, I don't think it's gonna be well, no, no. Of course, now I'm digressing, I forgot. But I, West Elm, we all have town water. And it has to have septic. So this is not a, a multi huge apartment complex, okay? These are what, what they were looking at. Um, I wish I had and I could show you. Um, but it, you're not gonna have it Thursday anyway, because that's not part of the plan. But what they were considering, that, that would be nice is duplexes. And I'm gonna explain why that's a great idea. But very, looking very fits in Townsend look. Not like an apartment complex would, doesn't look as cute. If you have duplexes, kind of the townhouse look, the cute look. Cause that's what they're, cause they, these people on this trust, they're really people who are thinking, what I'm gonna say, inside the box. But in the Townsend imaginary, I, I sometimes make fun of it, but the imaginary view of what Townsend, we want Townsend to look like, which is pretty conservative. And it's like, whatever, it's still, it does look nice, we need the housing. I, I was really impressed with the kind of concept they, that they were at a few months back when they were looking at pictures and things. It was somewhat boring to go through as, you know, watching other people make decisions, then it can be very boring. But looking at what they actually kinda did, it's like, wow, I mean, the end result is cool. But it's still, it, there's still nothing concrete, because you have to get into working with a developer if one comes out of the woodwork. They haven't gotten there yet. But the, the reason duplexes are really, they are the way to go to have the minimal impact on the towns and way of life and the appearance and impact on the community and including impact on the neighborhood. I can't remember how many units, I can picture this and there's not a lot, considering it, it looks, the point, laid out on some kind of conceptual drawing and looking at the distances between the houses, they're not sitting on each other's laps. Uh, but I, I'm thinking of some, like, there's cul-de-sac, there's cul-de-sac little ways up the street, Ryan Road. And there's single family houses that are in this cul-de-sac. And even if you went up to, uh, off Highland, the energies, zero energy homes, and you go into those cul- cul-de-sacks. I can't remember the name of the road, I wanna say, it's not Coop Ridge, uh, I forget. Um, I know we have some people that, I know some people that live up Um, I know we have some people that, I know some people that live up there too. But there's, but, I mean, that's kind of a cul, that is a cul-de-sac, I should say. But that's the concept, but instead of them being single family homes, they're, they're townhouses and they look like, well, you got townhouses, they look like, yeah, yeah, sometimes you have to take a double take to be, oh yeah, that is a townhouse, isn't it? Cause it, you know, you got two front doors, so that's your first clue. That you're looking at townhouses or duplex, depending on how old you are. I'm old, so I duplex was the term. Today, everybody's townhouse, townhouse. Okay, whatever. It's, they're two families, but it looks very nice. It's not like the old tenements. Or the old, well, if you get on Fitchburg, you got the old housing that they built 100 years ago to house factory workers and they, everything looked the same. And their tenements, well, that's not what we built. This is, those things don't get built anymore. I don't think anybody builds those anymore. But a duplex townhouse concept is very nice. And one issue, affordable housing is a unique problem. I mean, I can get, I, I, you know, I'm not one to, oh, it's the law, we gotta do it other than MBTA. But affordable housing just ain't affordable unless you gotta get, you gotta make things smaller and, and workable, that they can be built at a price that's, that makes it affordable. So if these are condos, let's call them, let's just, because this hasn't been decided. And it's not going to be until they're down the road on the development stage, okay? So if you've got a townhouse, they may be, it could be a combination apartments, rental, or condos, to which that's a whole nother thing. The town is not going to maintain ownership. They're going to, the developer, part of when you're doing developments now, the trust is part of the oversight to keep things within the way that the town wants. What makes it, what looks good, what works well, what provides the town with affordable housing and what fits with our vision of Townsend. And in good taste. And I support the Townsend Affordable Housing Trust's ability to make that happen. And, but with the, the townhouse concept, why that is so important to do these two family buildings. They're still look nice like a one family. But they're townhouses, which we need smaller footprints on each family. We, we, McMansions is some of the bigger houses that are seven, eight hundred thousand dollars in Townsend. I want to tell you what it costs to build a single family house today. The average cost of a single family house to be built, even to save every corner and you get the cheapest piece of crap that the builder can dish out is $600,000. To build it. That's to build it. Okay? Now, affordable housing, there are rules, in order to have people to afford a house, affordable housing needs to cost around three for somebody to be able to afford it, to make it affordable for somebody, a regular, everyday, working stiff. Or retirees, or just a young couple. Remember, remember, I mean, my generation, if you were lucky, I was in my 30s before I bought my house. But back, my, maybe the, my generation, maybe, maybe before that, people were buying houses in their twenties. They were called starter homes for young couples. You got a mom, dad, a kid on the way or something. You know, somebody, somebody might have a good job. But you, young families could buy a starter home. Those days are long gone. But the affordable housing laws and affordable housing plans and affordable housing trusts, these are all to try to make housing actually affordable for somebody that isn't making $300,000 a year. If you look up, because you can go on Zillow, they have calculators. And you can just Google calculator, what, how can I, what do I, how much money do I have to put down and buy a house? How much house can I buy? What can I afford? And if you say, okay, gee, all these houses around here, you know, the nice houses, they're 500 to 700,000 dollars. How much money do I need? Oh, you need $400,000 down. And, or you need to make $200,000 to $300,000 a year in order to buy a house that's on the market now. Now, some of the biggest people that I run into and is, are people my age, maybe a little younger as well. But people who have had their house a few years. I bought my house in 1983. And so I do not have a mortgage. And I know there are other people that do and they're suffering. But I paid 50 something thousand for my house. And that's not because I, I bought, you know, a broken house. That's, that was a reasonable price back in 1983. So all these years, I've, I've stuck it out in this house that needs more work, but that's a different conversation. Some, some people who are in the same place I am, where I don't have a mortgage and I couldn't be any happier that I don't have a $700,000 mortgage. I couldn't pay a $700,000 mortgage. Forget about it. I don't think I could handle a $500,000 mortgage. I mean, I don't even want to know what the payments are. But in some of it, when we are sitting here all fat, dumb and happy, thinking we got, oh, well, you know, you're just gonna work hard, you gotta save money. You cannot save money to keep up with inflation on the rising house, housing costs. Not happening. So government needs to work from the other side and work, and that's what the MBTA Communities Act is all about. The state has said, we gotta have more housing because we're going to have more people homeless than are living in houses. And it's, it's sick, it's sad, it's horrible. But some people, they're in kind of my situation where, hey, I don't, you know, back in my day, you know, and being younger, you, if you could scrimp and save or just get a good interest rate on a mortgage, interest rates are too high, even though they just came down a quarter point today, I guess. But that's not enough. Cause housing costs are still going up. You can't, and the job market is questionable now, I don't, you know, you can't. So they're just, you cannot build a single family house that is affordable, either by the law on affordable housing or by just average, average Joe, Joe and Joanne, you know, average person could say, can I afford to buy a house in my lifetime? How much does a single family house cost? Well, 600,000 bottom, that's the, the bottom. That's the lowest you're gonna get. Oh, man. Get, yes, that's out. No, we need to make them more affordable. Even if it doesn't need the, the, this legal criteria of affordable housing, we need of houses that, people that have, that, you know, don't want to be in an apartment anymore. Or might even be homeless, for Christ sakes, to, to purchase a property or have an apartment that is reasonably priced to, the rent is reasonable. But yet it's a nice place to live, you're getting the best you can. And we have to do, that's where these townhouses are the only thing. Or multifamilies, which that's not what housing, the trust is trying to do. They're not trying to build a multi, multi, multi-family. They're trying to do townhouses. And even in this plan, I, I want to say, there might've even been a single family stuck in there someplace. If they were going to do something that's, I don't, there's so many different formulas. But this property is being targeted by an abutter. This citizen's petition is all to support an abutter to the lot that has already been designated to provide some, and not even like hundreds of units, this is not a big deal here. This is to put a cul-de-sac in, generally speaking, with the potential of a series of townhouses to provide some affordable housing that's affordable. Whether it's the, the law affordable or just affordable. I'm just, I'm, I, my opinion, we need housing that's just affordable, not, whether or not it's the legal affordable or not, I'm not as interested in, I just think we need more townhouses are what people really are attracted to today. Both from a, a person seeking housing or from a, a neighborhood, a community and see, what does this look like? I'd rather see townhouses than an apartment building. It isn't a butter, if I were in a butter to this, I mean, I'd rather see a, a series of townhouses over there with people coming and going to work, their kids, you know, the regular neighborhood stuff. Or than an apartment house. But either one is needed, but the Townsend Affordable Housing Trust has already been designated, they've got this property. And these people are focused on what's in the best interest of town. And they're really looking at it. I'm, I'm vouching for them. That they really do know what they're doing. Well, that's a different story. But they're, they're doing, they are the people you want. I mean, they could use some help. That's a different story. But they, what they're trying to do is in the best interest of town. Now, I'm going to move a little bit down the street. And I'm only going to speak to my neighbors. Which I, I, I think that generally speaking, nobody gives a shit. But I know there are some neighbors on West Elm who don't want to see any more traffic. We're, we're really, this, West Elm, Lunenburg Road is the, the third busiest street in the town. 119 is the busiest, 13 is the second busiest. And West Elm, Lunenburg Road is the third busiest. People in the harbor might want to argue with me about the harbor lights and going down South Street and down there. But okay, we can have, we can do a traffic study, see what it is. But I'm pretty sure that West Elm wins. Uh, because we've got people from New Hampshire coming through here. Everybody goes, and everybody in town who's in west end of town, if you're going to Fitchburg, Lunenburg, or gonna go to 190, you're coming down my street, man. Has nothing to do with living here. And the people on, that would live on this street would add very little traffic in comparison to what's already here. It's not, I mean, it's, it's heavily traveled road and it has increased since I've lived here. But it's not because we built houses or anything, because I haven't seen much. There's been some, but nothing, you know, the traffic that we're seeing are commuters going through. They're, they're, they're not people that live here. They're passing through and it's not going to change, doesn't matter whether you build or not. But if people are living in the cul-de-sac, well, where are they going to go? Which way are they going to travel down the road? And it's, and my answer would be, it depends on where they're going. And it's might even be easier, if you're living up there, it's might be easier. Depend, it depends on your thought process. Living there, you're the decision tree. You're on a decision tree. I would, what I would do. They're right across, just about across from Wyman Road. Okay? The great spot to, and this, they can avoid the traffic on both West Elm and Lunenburg Road. They just shoot down Wyman Road. If they're going to Fitchburg, you hang a left on New Fitchburg. If you're coming uptown, you take a right on New Fitchburg, you get out on Main Street a lot faster because there's nobody on that road. Unless there's Little Lee going on at Craven Field. But even then, it's not that much traffic because they're all just parked on the side of the road and they're all, the kids are all in there screaming. I can hear them at my house. And then you get up on 119 and you join the rest of the universe. The only people that would go anywhere, most people would not go down West Elm because there's more traffic and it's easier to avoid that if you shoot over to New Fitchburg. I live on Lower West Elm and I do that. I use New Fitchburg for a lot of my traveling. I live like right by Main, so if I'm coming up, uptown, I do drive out my driveway and go up to Main Street and take a right, it's no big deal for me. But if I'm going to Fitchburg, I'm on New Fitchburg Road heading south. And it comes right out on John Fitch. And I might not see another car. That's how good it is. A little treacherous when there's ice and snow, because it doesn't get enough traveling to take care of that. But my truck is four wheel drive now, I got to use that. I had to go into four wheel drive just to go to the grocery store last one. That was fun. But anyway, the, this, the impact on the community, even in this neighborhood, is, is low. To, if this townhouse concept that they're looking at is where it goes. And I think it's in very, very, very good taste. This is a reactionary, nimby, not in my backyard attempt at spot zoning to prevent something that we've already started working on. The town has already given this to the Affordable Trust. How's, to Townsend Affordable Housing Trust to develop for affordable housing in town. And don't confuse this with the MBTA stuff, because it's night and day. It's just really night and day. This is cozy in a smaller area, fewer homes, fewer properties, and in good taste. And if you're not sure, you can go back to some of the older, in last winter, the meetings that the Townsend Affordable Housing Trust, they're on the Townsend YouTube channel. Where they're showing all this concept, you know, I'd, I can't tell you which meetings they were, because I'm not. But I, I watched some of them. And it's like yadda, 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 you know, but I mean, they're, but at the end of it all, hey, I like what they're, they're, they're thinking about. I know how they're, I, I finally got a, a taste of what they're thinking about. And I just want to say also, looking at other communities, I came across a few cons, uh, plans that are being looked at and in the planning process for other communities in the same idea of all this good taste. And a lot of projects like Townsend is trying to put together are all along the same idea, sort of, kind of, depending on the community. Every community's got a little bit different twist. But they're all in very good taste and they look so cute and they fit. They're really nice. And that's exactly what the Townsend Affordable Housing Trust is doing with this property. All right, it's not, it's just not bad. And the next thing they need is money, which they're not going to see a lot, too much more money until the CPA tax comes in. And then, and then they're going to compete with other people to get money off that. So we're a few years out, this isn't happening. There's no bulldozers lined up on Lunenburg Road or West Elm to go in there, start clearing trees and start building. or West Elm to go in there, start clearing trees and start building monstrosities. None of that is happening anytime soon, and none of it's happening ever. But this citizen's petition is a knee jerk attempt at spot zoning and for a nimby purpose for the abutter. Okay? This is frightening. Look at this. It's like, this is an actual, Assessors Map ten parcel fifty-two and parcel seventy. That's the corridor of Blood Road and West Elm. That's already been planned for this for quite some time. And they're really working. Everything they're doing in the last couple of years has been, they moved around, they, they, again, just like the, the planning board was doing with the MBTA stuff, and these are not related, okay? This is just kind of happening at the same time. That this, that there are a number of parcels that are, were, or still, some of them still are owned by the town of Townsend. In fact, the, the trust actually does have possession of some of these other properties that they've ruled out at this time for any development, for housing, for a number of reasons. Some of it's conservation, some of it's access to town resources like water, the septic stuff is an issue, aquifer problems, a lot of wetland stuff, and you know, will they have town water? I mean, there's all kinds of problems with a lot of sites. And that's, that's probably the biggest thing that prevents a lot of development from happening in Townsend. Our, I'll, I'll just generally put everything into conservations, even though it's not all conservation. But the, the housing, um, the, the other properties, they're doing some forestry work, like they're, they're selling trees, which whether or not it's for housing or not, it's just the town, this is having a forestry plan, which we get money from the forestry plan that the state does in, in all the state forests, half of Townsend, nearly half of Townsend is state forest, in case you didn't know that. But the state does, uh, thinning of the forest periodically, and they sell the timber and we get some of the money. By the way. So this is the same concept. The, the trust is got property, the, the town has transferred properties to the trust. The trust looks at the forestry management plan, gets the trees and maybe make a few bucks. Without, they're not like deforesting. It's another concern these same people have. We're not doing deforest, deforestation. They're just selling some good timber to help fund the things we need to do that's in the best interest of the town. So I'm talking a lot in this article. Because if, when you fall into a nimby trap, it's easy to fall into it. Oh, no, we don't want this monstrosity. They're not building a monstrosity on, on Blood Road for Christ sakes. The, the road needs, and you know what will happen here too? Another positive for the community. Have you ever driven up the West Elm side of Blood Road? Have you ever tried to go up there to go to somebody's house? You need a tank. The, the road is not in the, no, the road isn't. I mean, people's driveways are washing away. I just, it's just not, it's really not that good. But the road, I mean, this development would create road improvement from the developer, not this, the town doing it. The developer would fix, get that all nice, even though the town would end up at some point, I mean, the town already does own Blood Road. But this would be good for the, just the, the, the general area. We'd have, this would be a mega improvement. And because of the, the perfect location where it's situated, very minimal impact on the area. Very minimal. And the people living there, like I said, I mean, I'm going back to something I already said, but the people's, wherever they're driving around, they're, they're really not gonna impact West Elm to any degree. If I lived up there and I want to get out on a main street to come to town hall, I would go up to Wyman, down Wyman, to New Fitchburg, out to Main Street and then out. I wouldn't get in the line, sometimes there's a line of traffic that goes to like six West Elm Street, which is a couple houses down from the intersection, almost three houses down. As they're waiting to get, I was gonna say, wait for the light. There's no light. It's a stop sign. It's easier. Get out of New Fitchburg, take a right. And you're not in any line of traffic and you're, you're on Main Street. Now you have the right of way. Hello. So West Elm would have almost no impact from, uh, hell, even if you're going to New Hampshire, I would do the same thing. I would, that's easier because you're halfway across. I, I could get into a traffic plan. How to negotiate the roads in Townsend and minimize your stress. I could do a class on that because I, I've learned a lot of different ways around here that people just don't do. They just complain, complain, we gotta complain, we gotta do things my way. Oh, no, do it my way. It's much easier. Trust me. But I just want to stop babbling about Article Six. But I want, I, I'm asking you to vote against this. It's not in the best interest of the town. It's harmful. And sets, um, some really good work back. And it, it's, it's hard, this hurts the town more than the nimby attitude wants. It doesn't. It, it, it's nimby stuff can, sometimes nimby is good. I'm not always against nimby stuff. There, there could be limits on things in the world that I would say, oh, no, I'm nimby on that one. But for this, no, this nimby action is unnecessary and harmful to the town. So I am opposed to Article Six and I ask the townspeople to join me in this. So let me bring my smiling face back. Hi. I'm sorry for the lighting. Um, I killed some of the light because I'm, I don't have my green screen up right now, and i- if I turn on the lights on, the pixelation behind me is horrible and it looks like crap. So my, my kind of, I, I brought the brick wall back because it's like, sometimes I feel like I'm talking to a brick wall. And some of these articles on the town meeting, I'm being a little sarcastic when I refer to talking to a brick wall. I'm just hoping that I haven't just spent the last two hours. Wow, I've been talking for two hours? No wonder my throat hurts. The, I, I just hope that I haven't been just talking to a brick wall. I'm, I'm hoping that the townspeople have been listening to what I've been saying about these articles. I think that, uh, I think my opinion is the only right opinion. Yes, I do, actually. I, I, this is, I gave you the articles that we're going over. That's, that's all the articles, folks. For the special town meeting on September twenty-fifth at seven PM at the high school. These are important articles that we need to vote on and we need to vote yes on one, two, three, four. And no one five and six. Five was the, uh, yeah, five is the mailing and six is the, um, the nimby. I call it the nimby article. No on those, um, because yeah, five is too expensive, six is nimby. Get it out of here. Say no, say no to nimby. And I, I think we'll be all better for it if we accept Article Six. And the MBTA thing, again, I'm gonna say it again, it's zoning only. Okay, so vote yes. But those are the articles. If you want more information, you can get it on the town of Townsend's website. And if you do, don't just wait to go to town meeting and have somebody explain the meaning of life to you. Do some research on your own. Look on the website. Watch this video again. Scan it back and forth. You can fast forward, go backwards. You can do whatever you want to see this art, this video again. But you can also go to the Townsend website. They've really put a lot of information from the main page. You can find most of the information that you could possibly want on these articles. Or at least on the MBTA one. That's the big one. Okay, I'm gonna thank everybody for bearing with me. And I ask everyone to like and subscribe, the old YouTube mantra. Like and subscribe and share with your friends. And you know what? Do some comments. Comment on this video. This, I'm going to be in a few moments putting this up as a preview, so you'll, everybody will think it's live, but it's not. Does that drive you crazy? I hope not. My phone is beeping. Anyway, okay, shoot, it's almost eight o'clock. All right, so have a good evening, have a good week, and I hope to see everybody at town meeting next Thursday, seven PM at the high school. And I hope you vote the way I am. Vote like me. I'm probably not gonna say anything at town hall, I mean, at town meeting. Cause I've said it all right here, although I probably will. You know me, I can't keep my mouth shut. All right, thanks for listening and putting up with another one of my videos, and I hope it's been helpful. I really do. That is my, the goal of this channel to keep, is keeping the public informed. And if I can find the right buttons, I can bore you with more music and then close it up. If the music's working, it wasn't working yesterday. All right, see you later.